The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, we'll begin. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, March 14th, 6:30 PM. We're beginning our budget work sessions. We have a number of departments we're going to be speaking with this evening. And Robert, is there anything you'd like to say before we get started about where we are with the budget and what's going on there? You've been over it a few times, I know, with your presentation, so.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything to add.
Nothing to add?
No.
Okay. Well, we'll just get started and move along because everybody's got a schedule that we're supposed to be keeping.
We're going to move data processing up to the front.
Okay.
Ahead of the last year.
I didn't think that was Trish sitting there. All right.
Kevin has a board of ed meeting that he has to go to shortly.
Oh, that's right. Okay. All right. Data processing. 108. Let me just get there. I was on the library one.
The data processing budget is scheduled to increase by $43,492 or 41.96%. Before you get too excited about the number, a good portion of that increase is because we've consolidated all of our printers and copiers into one department. And this is where it ended up. So there are some minuses in other departments as well.
Oh.
Although there are a couple of contractual increases. One is ClearGov increased by $2,600 because we added the package where they put the budget book together when it's all said and done at the end. And Admins, which is our finance package, increased by 5.34%, and that's by $2,500 as well. So a little bit over $5,000 of the increase is because of those two changes as far as our software contracts are concerned. But the bulk of it is the consolidation of copiers and printers and whatnot into one line item to be more easily tracked them going forward.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 155 in the amount of $147,148.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion in the motion? Any questions for Kevin?
A question. In all the other budgets that may have included a maintenance contract for copiers, was there anything to ensure that that money has been removed from all the other budgets?
I believe so. The one thing I, and I may be saying that this is also replacing copiers that have been sitting for a long time on no contracts, but they're just antique. So we are modernizing the printing fleet. We're pulling out a lot of printers as well that were costlier per page. Somewhere is on like three times costlier per page than the copiers. So we should see over time a decrease in overall costs for it because we pay per page for imprint. We don't prepay for thousands of pages we may not use. That's what a lot of these copier contracts try to do. We pay solely for what we use. But we have maintenance on all these devices. And we've, like I said, consolidated. We're going down to less and less devices. This will not completely be fully in place until the fiber network is finished, which should be shortly, hopefully. And then we'll have what's called a product called Paper Cut, which will manage and monitor, which we have in this building already, print jobs, copying, faxing, and all that. We can run reports on who's using what and things like that. So we could actually build back to departments if they, you know, see what their usage is.
Right. So it was really, and I think we had a presentation on that at one point, right? It was really sort of a revamping of the whole system of.
Yeah. Instead of having the library go out the bid for three copiers and the police department go out for two copiers and the town hall go out for three, we went out for like 25 copiers. We had bids from multiple vendors. And we went with actually a company right here in town, Office Works. They work right in the center of, right by the industrial park. They've been here for a while. Schools use them as well. They've been a great company.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Yep. To answer your question, Rosemary, Matt and I went through every budget to make sure that the copiers were taken out. You're not going to see them specifically because they're buried within the maintenance contract line items.
That's what I know, yes.
For the most part, unless the department only had that particular item in there. But I don't believe there were any of those, quite honestly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
If I may, how long is the contract for?
Three years with an option for four.
And at the end of the contract, do you keep those copier machines or do you turn them back in for another contract?
Usually you turn them back in for another contract. And then you, you know, so then you, because usually after four years or five years, the maintenance becomes more expensive, like it keeps going up in price if you were to keep them. And so then you're spending more money there. So, and it matters in high use areas. It's in the schools especially. We do a million prints on one device after a long time. So here it may not be. So we could maybe go another year. We'll see. We'll see how it goes with the devices. But some of the devices are smaller. They've been right fit by the companies that came out and looked at the usage. They looked at how many pages they're doing per month and put a machine there for the speed that they're required and the number of pages they would do. So.
And the maintenance is paid for?
It's included in the print. Yeah. So every page you print, it's in there. And then so part of this is a lease payment. That's the 12 months. I think it's 1744. That pays for all the copiers. That's the 12 months a year. And then you pay, then we get billed. And that's with the bottom two line items, at least I have here.
Yep.
You pay for, for the year. So how much color, how much black and white.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll have historical data after a year of having this implemented to know exactly what we're paying per copy for both color and black and white. The lease payments, we know what those are for three years. And truly after four years, the technology should be better on the machines. And we've learned over time with the machines we had that we had to get rid of in some cases. After three, four, or five years, they just don't, they just don't work anymore, properly anyway. The jams are really, really bad.
And the fourth year, is that our option to exercise or is it the company that we're contracting with? Or is it a mutual option?
It's pretty much a mutual option. I mean, there's nothing that says we have to keep the machines. We can go out the bid again in three years if we want it to. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That department passes. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next item we have is the library on page 264, Department 520. There's two elements of this budget. One is the expenditure side and one is the revenue side. I'll start with the expenditure side, which is on page 265. Total budget proposed, and I believe this has been approved by the Library Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Is an increase of, it's a total budget of $763,461, which is an increase of $18,731 or 2.52%. With respect to the full-time salaries, we budgeted 2.5%. The reason why you see one a little bit higher than 2.5% is one of those employees, relatively new employee, and they're scheduled to get a step increase next year as well. So that brought the increase in full-time salaries a little bit higher than 2.5%. With regards to part-time salaries, you see 2.58%. Basically, it's a 2.5% increase in part-time salaries. I know that some, we have a little less employees, but the employees we have for part-time are a little bit more hours that they're getting. But the overall part-time hours are the same. So that's part-time. With regards to other contractual, there are, you know, that's part of that is a decrease because of the copiers. There's also some decrease because of, we have, I guess, put a filter on our internet. And what that allows us is to get some E-rate, what they call E-rate funding from the state. And that was something that was approved by the Board of Trustees. I know that, Rosemary, I believe you participated in some of those conversations about the putting the filter.
I was there. Yeah.
Yeah. That was an interesting conversation, of course. And so that helped to lower that budget a little bit. And then we have some, you know, some maintenance contracts that increased as well under other contractual. We recommending increasing the electricity line item. We see that we're using a little bit more than we had budgeted. So we underestimated what that budget was. Water and sewer, we lowered a little bit based upon past history. And so that's really the highlights with regards to that budget. I'm sure Trish, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, you hit all the highlights.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions about the line items as far as the budgets? I will say, we get to the revenue side, the recommendation is you're going to see an increase in what we do to support the library. We can have a conversation about that.
Just as a little background, E-rate means if you are compliant with the Children's Internet Protection Act, also known as SIPA, you can get E-rate funds, which cuts the fees for your internet service provider in half. So we decided to do that. The filters are extremely minimal. It filters illegal websites only. So they're very sophisticated now. So we don't expect any valuable information to be blocked.
Okay. Robert, I have a quick question regarding electricity. We reduced it. Now it's going back up. We reduced it last year or the year before, and now we're going back up again. We're increasing it by $10,000 for electricity?
Yes.
Is that based on current usage or estimated going forward?
Well, you could see that the year before, we spent almost $36,000 in '21. We're running at that rate this year, if not even a little bit higher. And the electricity rates have increased a little bit as well. So that's why we're recommending $10,000.
I would think, in all honesty, we reduced it incorrectly so this current year, thinking that we would get more from the virtual net metering on the solar panels, which we did not. But that's in hindsight, not a year ago at this time. So.
Okay. Yes, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I noticed, looking at our book from last year as I was looking at this year, and we had reduced it, yeah.
We did, yeah.
We had voted to reduce it, yeah.
Yeah. Again, the information at the time last year was that we could, you know, might be a good thing to do. And as it turns out, it may not have been in hindsight.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for Trish regarding the library, at least the expenditure portion of it? All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 520 in the amount of $763,461.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And we're looking at.
Library Fund Revenue, which is on page 264. The key number here is the inter-fund transfers in, at least from my perspective, from the general fund, and the one above that, which is the use of fund balance. So that's the use of fund balance out of the library's fund balance. Recommending, at least at this stage, an increase of 40, well, let me, you know, total budget matches the budget on the expenditure side, which is $763,461, 2.52%. However, based upon the other revenues available, the suggestion is that we use a fund balance amount of $24,000, almost $24,500, and an increase in the, which is a decrease from the current year, and to increase the general fund contribution to $685,000, which is a $45,000 increase. To put that in perspective, we have slowly used the fund balance in the library account to really keep the amount that we've paid towards, from the general fund to support the library, you know, actually going down. Five years ago, the amount that was contributed by the town was $659,000. This year, it's $640,000. So, you know, it went from $659 to $650, $645, $640. So now we're looking to jump that back up to perhaps $685,000. We had budgeted a fund balance over the last five years, $25,000. Five years ago, then $25,000. Four years ago, $36,000. Three years ago, $21,006. Two years ago, and $42,000. We actually increased it. So that's a total of, we budgeted $150,000 use of fund balance from the library over that period of time. That's not to say we used $150,000 because when you get to the end of the year, you have expenses that came in under, you have revenues that perhaps came in over. So we didn't use $150,000, but we did budget. I will tell you that we expect that our, that our fund balance at the end of this year, June 30th, in the library, will be about $75,000, which is roughly 10% of the library budget. Using 24, five of that would bring it down to right around $50,000. We feel that we should maintain a fund balance in the library budget. And, you know, Rob and I both feel that that probably should be somewhere around, you know, 10%. Now, we have talked about using some ARPA dollars to make up for some lost revenues in the library of $100,000. If the council goes forward with that, that certainly would bring your fund balance up to $175,000 at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of this fiscal year, and would perhaps, you know, allow you to use some more of that to not have as large an increase on the, you know, from the general fund contribution, at least maybe another couple of years. So I mean, that's an option for not having that large increase as far as the general fund is concerned. And that's one of the reasons why I recommended that the council consider putting some additional dollars from ARPA as a result of some lost revenue, specifically in some of the use of, you know, some of the funds that we had. And, you know, that's primarily the reason why. So I don't know how you want to handle that at this point in time, whether you want to, you know, the number that she would approve as far as this budget is concerned is the inter-fund transfers into the library, which is, you know, which is contributed from the general fund. You could always change that at a later time, or you can, you know, I mean, you can change it in April if you choose to do so. You know, or you can, you know, I'm not sure, you know, you got to recommend something, I guess, for April. So if you know where you're going to go, then you want to discuss that now and make that decision. That is final as well. I don't think you should hold it at the same dollar amount that you have in the current fiscal year. I certainly think you should increase it, should you increase it to what's proposed here. I'll leave that up to the council's, you know.
Okay. Any thoughts on that from Robert?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Certainly, I think if we are going to keep that $100,000 in ARPA funds that we plan to use or have the library use, I do think we can take, you know, the $45,000 increase on the inter-fund transfer and, you know, maybe make it $25,000 increase and use 20, you know, add 20, whether it's the, I guess it would be their fund balance.
Yes.
We take an additional $20,000.
Okay. I'm all right with that. Everybody okay? Understand what we're doing?
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
I had a question on the use of the ARPA funds, though. If I remember correctly, there's a requirement that we have to liquidate those funds within like two years, I think, right?
Well, once we put it into the.
It satisfies that requirement.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I want to know. Thanks.
At least that's our understanding, you know, as they come out with.
If there's an argument for.
Yeah. We have to obligate them by December of '24 and spend them by December of '26.
Can, just a follow-up. As far as allocating the $100,000, we can do that at any time?
Yes. And I would recommend you do it before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah. That's what, I would like to see that, that before we get to the new fiscal year, that we actually make that $100,000 transfer or whatever you want. I don't know what the proper term.
The first filing we have to do is April 30th. So whether we do it before or after April 30th is irrelevant to my filing date.
Okay.
As a matter of whether we show the $100,000 or show zero.
Yep.
And then a year from now, April of '23, we'll show whatever we just have to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Robert, do you need us to approve this revenue line item?
Yes. The inter-fund transfers in general fund, if you're going to make that go up by $25,000?
I was just, yeah. So I was going to, you know, make it 665.
665.
427 for the inter-fund transfer to the library fund.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Roundabout way, yes.
Yep.
Any discussion? We all know what we're doing. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you for another great year.
Yep.
Next item we have is the Senior Center, Senior Citizens Services and Senior Citizens Transportation Fund. First one is on page 206 and 207. This is Senior Center. Proposed budget is recommended at $360,327, which is an increase of $8,833 or 2.51%. Increase in the full-time salary is, you know, 2.57%. It's 2.5% just with some rounding and maybe, you know, make it up for, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there from previous years. The part-time salaries, somewhat driven by the minimum wage going up. And so, you know, so that, you know, required some increases for people who were just above the minimum wage, at least from our perspective. We're looking to have part-time maintenance people and some office workers in the $18 an hour area. We came up with a plan to do, to implement that over two years. I believe this is the second year of that implementation, to get up to $18 an hour. So if the part-time increase was 2.5%, that would have been, that number would have been $110,151. To get to what we're proposing here is $811 more. So while the percentage looks high, we're talking about really an $811 if it was a 2.5%.
Robert, how many office assistants are in the part-time salary position line? It says office assistants, but I don't know that. Sean can tell me that.
Three. Three. And then we have, excuse me, one woman who fills in. So, you know, she's only working when we are down something.
Okay. So it's three.
Three office assistants.
Different people.
And they work part-time, not all at the same time?
Not all at the same time, exactly.
Right.
They range anywhere from, I guess, 12 hours to 20, 22, I think.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Nothing else here?
Madam Chair?
Motion to approve, please.
Yep. Motion to approve Department 420 in the amount of $360,327.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is Senior Transportation, Senior Citizens Transportation on page 265 and 266. I'd like to start on 265, which is the expenditure side. Well, excuse me, the library's 265. That's the page I gave you today, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll make the page numbers bigger next year. I know that that's been a.
Thank you, because I didn't want to have to admit.
Everybody's going to go out and get their glasses and judge.
Yeah. We'll, we'll still make a book for you, Kathy, you know, like I did not say earlier.
If you go to page 266, hopefully, mine's opposite that. Mine doesn't have a page number, so.
No, it doesn't, yeah.
So I don't know if that's 267 or.
This was the one I gave you. I left in front of you tonight.
266 and a half.
266, yeah.
That's what I wrote down.
Okay.
Split the difference.
Okay.
Talking about a budget of $66,901, increase of $7,861 or 13.31%. Part-time salaries is what's going, is what's going up. And we have next to that grants, maybe you want to explain that a little bit?
Absolutely.
That's offset by grants that we.
This budget is funded in a number of ways. It's funded through, first of all, $31,666 or something like that from the town of Plainville. And then we get an $18,381 grant. Then we also do a lot of fundraising. And that's all kinds of fundraising. People just make donations. It might be a memorial donation. It might be, we get money from the Bishop's Relief Fund, different sources of income. Fundraising, our fair, our tag sales, our raffles, all these kinds of things. And we're very successful at the fundraising. Then also are the fees that people, we have donations. We don't have fees. It's called fees in here, but that's because they don't have an area for rider donations. We can't charge a fee, but people make donations. There's a little box and you can make donations. And then we also try and maintain a fund balance so that we can, if we go over, and we sometimes do, depending on ridership, we can go to the fund balance. So all of these things put together is what makes this work. The town of Plainville pays approximately 50% of the fee, even a little less now, I think it'll be.
Which is $31,662. And I think it's remained right at that number for several years now.
Yes.
Many years. So.
Yes.
On the revenue side. So while you see the expenditures going up, the increase is being covered by other sources of revenue, not the town contributed, contribution source of revenue. And that's what you see on page 266.
So the part-time area, part-time grants, we have one driver that works for HRA, which is the Human Resources Agency of New Britain, Bristol. And they do our dispatching and they provide a driver and do state reports and all of that kind of thing. It's a way for both of us, both agencies, to save money. And so we've been doing that for over 30 years. Now, it was Bristol Community Organization prior to HRA, but 35 years we've been doing that and saving lots and lots of money. Then we have a driver who works for the town of Plainville. And he works under this grant program. And that's why you see a change, a big change, because we're using the entire amount of the grant. Then other contractual is monies that we spend for additional hours for drivers and for the HRA contract that we have. Auto repair and maintenance, of course, is anything that the town of Plainville Buildings and Grounds Group, Dave Emery's group, can't do or unable to do or doesn't have time to do, that kind of thing. And also for lift inspections, which are required of the buses. We have to do those twice a year.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 425 in the amount of $66,901.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to do this inter-fund transfer here?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, motion to do an inter-fund transfer in the amount of $31,662.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Anything else? Robert, we're all set with senior citizens?
Thank you for your support always.
Yes, we are.
Good. Okay. Thanks, Sean.
I wasn't sure if Sean wanted any parting comments.
Just a big thank you. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
All right. You too.
Bye now.
Bye.
Next, we have recreation. Courtney is here this evening.
Page 222.
Yeah, page 222. And it's Department 510. As you are well aware, you know, COVID pandemic has really created an uncertainty with regards to recreation. A lot of programs were eliminated two years ago. It's starting to come back in the current fiscal year, and we hope to be able to hit the ground running with a full, if not even beyond, what we've done in the past as far as the schedule of recreation programs for both young children, children in school, and even adults. So this is the recreation budget, recommended budget of $186,555. recommended budget of $186,555, which is an increase of $5,740 of 3.17%. The increase in the full-time salary, we budgeted 2.5% for full-time employees. We do have a new employee that's, has a step increase. And that's the reason why there's an increase there. It's actually two steps because last year, the person, the person was hired. And it was after our budget process. And so we ended up with, with a step this year. And then we have a step for next year. So we have to catch up this year because we hired them after the budget was approved. And, but it was before the fiscal year. So we got a step in the current year and a step in the next year. So we want to make sure we have that, we have that properly budgeted. We're going to run a little bit above, you know, this year. So that's why you see, you know, that's what we're anticipating. Does that explain it, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Other numbers pretty much stay the same. A little bit lower here, a little bit higher there. I guess the, the, you know, the whole theme is kind of getting back to normal, if that's possible, for recreation.
So we'll be back to full warp speed this summer?
That's the plan.
This spring.
Very excited.
Yep. Okay.
This is one line item where you will see the revenue, I'm sorry, the expenditure reduction for the copiers. That's $600 in maintenance machinery and equipment. That's where that was for the Recreation Department.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Department 510.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 510 in the amount of $186,555.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Now we have the Recreation Special Fund, which is on page 258, Department 515. And this is the, this, this pays for the recreation programs. This is all the revenue that, receipts that we have for people who sign up for programs that cost money. It comes in here and the town. The fees do not pay entirely for all of the programs. The pool being one, that's, you know, we don't raise enough money through what we charge people to use the pool. That's kind of a lost leader, so to speak. And we make money in other areas. The proposal this year is not to increase the contribution from the general fund, keep it at $83,500. The unassigned fund balance for recreation stands right now at about $183,000. So it's relatively healthy. We have expenditures on the expenditure side of the budget, which is on page 259. You know, that's increasing by, by some dollars there, mostly because of part-time salary related to minimum wage. So you have a, a expenditure budget at $270,020. You have revenues at $234,200. That's a difference of 30, almost $36,000. And that's what would be used out of that $183,000 fund balance this year. And that's keeping the, again, keeping the general fund contribution at 83.5. I'm not sure if everybody saw that. If you look on page 259, which is, you know, right next door to this, this one we were talking about, you'll see where the, where the actual recreation fund expenditures would be at $270,020, which is an increase of $17,265. And the revenues would be at $234.2 on page 260, 258, excuse me. That's a difference of $35,820. And that difference will be paid for using the fund balance available in the recreation special fund. So if that's satisfactory, if that's satisfactory to the council, and certainly Courtney's here to answer some questions, if you have any, for her, it would be approving the recreation fund expenditures for $270 and $20. And then, and on the, on the, on the revenue side, just considering the interfund transfers in of $83,500.
Okay. Any questions for Courtney while she's here? Everybody know what we're doing with these three moving parts of recreation?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if it's a question so much for Courtney, but more for Robert. Are we using any ARPA money to supply some of the revenue in this fund?
No.
No? Is that an option?
It could be. We could, we could do a calculation of lost revenue for, for recreation because we weren't able to, you know, raise dollars because of the programs. I just feel that we, you know, with the list that we have for ARPA, that could be better spent rather than parking it in here. And I didn't feel it was needed, but it certainly could be done if that's the council's wish.
Can we consider that as another option to offset some dollars there? Or do we want to just move forward with this transfer?
How much of it, the all, the whole 17? Or 17, take 17?
Well, it would be to offset the $83,000, $83,500, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting similar to what we're doing with the library?
Yeah, just to offset some of it.
Ideally, that money would go into a fund balance, and then we would just take some of that out, back out to help offset an increase.
Yep.
And remembering that you have a relatively healthy unassigned fund balance to begin with at $183,000. But, you know, if you put some more money in there, that certainly could hedge against that bumping back up over a period of time.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay, so how much you want?
What's, what's your pleasure?
Do we want to cut it in half? Kind of like what we did with the library?
Yeah, how, how much funds in ARPA money did we, were we 5.2 million? Or what was, I, I know we've only, you know, on our, we're at 5.189 that we, you know, on the list that we created.
Yeah, the total is 5,192 and change.
Okay, so we, so we're pretty much...
So if you take 40K out of it and then just transfer it to 43 plus.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the money, the ARPA money's got to get used somewhere.
All right. All right, gotcha. All right, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for an interfund transfer of $43,500.
Second.
Is that $42,500?
$43,500.
$43,500.
Yeah, with the remainder $40,000 coming out of ARPA.
Well, come out of the unassigned fund balance.
Unassigned fund balance, thank you, Robert.
Yep.
And, yeah, I'll make the other, a separate motion for the $270,020, right?
Has everybody got that? Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and motion to approve Department 515 in the amount of $270,020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, okay.
Two items before we move on from here.
All right.
Do you have a thought of how much you would want us to bring to the council as far as ARPA is concerned? I mean, just the 40,000 that you did tonight? Or would you want to do something more than that?
I would...
I would say the 40. But that's, I mean, you know, I think two things. You know, their fund balance is pretty healthy compared to what, you know, the actual department, department's budget is. But also, you know, we're not going to be able to take 40,000 out every year from fund balance. So we gotta, you know, I want to make sure we understand that, you know, that's kind of...
You're gradually going to have to go back over time.
At some point, yeah. I mean, I would at least like to replenish the 40 with the ARPA money just so we're not, you know, depleting that account too quickly or, you know, because we are going to have to at some point decide not to use any of their fund balance to support the operational expenses. So I'd, you know, as long as it's at least 40, I'd be comfortable with it.
Sounds reasonable.
All right. And we'll bring that forward before the end of the year consideration. Okay, second thing is, I wasn't sure if Courtney wanted to say any words? Any, any new? I know that you've had some ideas as far as the summer program is concerned and... Just bring the count, you know, we don't get to see you all that often. And you have a couple of minutes.
And I'll get to brag a little bit.
Yeah.
No, it's going to be really my first normal summer. I started October of 2019 and then, you know, everything went to chaos. So... Oh, so two years tomorrow. So I'm super looking forward to this summer. But, you know, bringing in the new recreation coordinator that we have this year, she has an extensive background in camps. And I really think she's going to take our camp experience to the next level. She's already created a parent handbook to kind of give parents a step-by-step of what they should expect for their kids to come to camp with. And she's really going to up the professionalism of the staff. And I think we're going to expect great things this summer. We're expanding our mini-camps, so our camps for the little ones from half-day options only. So we're going to do full day as an option as well, as well as the half-day. So it's going to be great for working parents or even if they just want to get their kids out of the house a little bit longer. You know, so we have a lot of exciting stuff going on. We're going to be running swim lessons back to normal. The camp's going to be able to get back into the pool every day. Very excited. And then our summer concerts are going to be fire this year. So you guys should definitely come.
There you go. And one thing that I thought was, was really good as well is that Courtney has set it up so that parents and whatnot can, can actually sign up for some of these programs earlier than they normally would as well. You know, maybe not be as early as they'd like it to be because generally they want to sign their, their kids up. I think the day that the recreation programs end at the end of the summer, planning for next year, but it's going to be, I don't know, about April 4th.
April 4th, we're going to start registration.
We've usually done, you know, like late days.
It was late May. And that's a little late for parents, you know, planning for the summer and everything. So we're excited to launch that.
And a lot of it is done online as well, right?
Yes.
So there's no change to any of the fees or anything of that nature, right? We're, we're keeping them the same terms of...
The swimming lessons went up slightly, but everything else will be status quo.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
It's just swim lessons. We keep the ratio a little bit smaller than even the Red Cross dictates for safety reasons and especially with COVID too. Like I said, it's going to be the most normal summer I've seen here. But, you know, instead of doing a class size of 1 to 10, we'll do 1 to 8 just to keep things a little bit safer on all aspects of it. So that's the explanation for that fee. But, like I said, it was, it was nominal, it wasn't much.
Pool passes are staying the same.
Pool passes are going to be staying the same, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming. We're, I'm sure many people are looking forward to a, a real summer of recreation in the town of Plainville.
Finally.
You know, that was greatly missed. I'm, I'm, I know that for a fact from my family. They just truly missed all of those wonderful things they could do, especially the pools. That was a big loss for many people. So thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate that. Anything else, Courtney? Everybody's good?
Okay. Have a wonderful night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
We have a couple of items dealing with planning, inland wetlands, economic development, planning. And I guess Cal's representing all four of those this evening. I'm not sure you'll have to say too much, but anyhow. Look, well, maybe I shouldn't predict those things. Mark DeVoe has had a medical procedure done, so he wasn't available to come tonight. But I, again, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is on page 45, the total budget is $1,600, an increase of $200. And you may say, why the increase in $200? There's a new requirement, there's a new state requirement that new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission gets a certain amount of, I guess, training. And so we put $200 in there. We don't, we don't know how, you know, really don't know what that's going to mean. But that's, that's, that's the reason for the $200 increase in the training budget.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 111 in the amount of $1,600.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is inland wetlands, Department 113, which is on page 53.
Zero change. Madam Chair?
It's a budget of $1,000.
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 113 in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is...
Took me a while to get there. Okay.
I know, I missed my cap.
Next item is economic development.
Oh.
I was going to bet you about that all year.
On page 120. I'm looking at page 122. Total budget is $76,100, which is an increase of $5,300. You may recall that last year we gave Cal, the Economic Development Director, a, you know, an increase. And we, we had not budgeted for it. And so this is really just a catch-up. This is, this is really just an increase of the 2.5% over what his current salary is. So this is really just a catch-up. He's already received the, the increase, which was discussed at the council level previously. I will point out that, you know, Cal is, is certainly the, you know, the point person on the White Oak Project. Been doing a lot of work there. And he's also assisting Rob with the ClearGov, you know, project as well. So he's very versatile and, and been doing a good job, so.
Very needed.
That's our Economic Development Department.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 170 in the amount of $76,100.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next is Planning, Planning Department. It's on page 186. It's a budget of $99,950. It is an increase of $20,911. The sole reason for the increase is, is when Garrett left us, we hired Mark and Mark's, you know, in order to attract Mark back to Plainville, back again. That took, that's, that's basically what the salary, the salary increases.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair? Go ahead. Motion to approve the Department 380 in the amount of $99,950.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Yeah, we're ready to, to move on to Board of Assessment Appeals. Rob's area. Overview. Board of Assessment Appeals, budget of $1,900, which is actually a slight decrease of $650. And that's because, you know, it's not a revow year. of $650, and that's because, you know, it's not a revow year. Went up a little bit this year because of the revow year, next year's not a revow year, so. So we pay a little bit less for our Board of Assessment Appeal members and some of the other.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 114 in the amount of $1,900.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is the Town Treasurer on page 92, which is Department 135. This is part-time salary for the Town Treasurer, total budget of $6,482, looking to give the Town Treasurer a two and a half percent increase, which totals $158.
May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 135 in the amount of $6,482.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next is the Finance Department.
Oh, boy.
Which is on page 96. I'm looking at page 97, total budget of $252,325. Basically, the increase is in full-time salary. It's a 3.4%. That's because our bookkeeper is due a step increase, and that's the reason why that's over the two and a half percent. See a slight increase in maintenance contracts, $420.
The maintenance contracts is our fixed asset software, which we're going to spend way over this year. We had to upgrade the software from, I believe it was 2008 version, which I had no idea, we never upgraded, and we had to get it up into the 2021st level because it stopped working during the audit. So we had to do a one-time payment to get them to convert the data to the newest technological platform of the software. And the increase in the maintenance contract is obviously because it's a newer software package versus the older one we were carrying for 15 years.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 136 in the amount of $252,325.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Next department is Assessments and Revenue Collection, page 100, Department 137. Recommended budget of $396,720, which is an increase of $7,507 or a percentage increase of 1.93%. See, full-time salaries going up by 1.9%. We've, we had some people leave us at a slightly higher salary and hired some people at, you know, you know, union people at a lower salary, so that's where, that's why the increase is not, not what you would normally see. We have some part-time decreases well.
Is that for decreasing people or just hours?
We really haven't used it all that much. We have it available in case we need it, and I just felt that if we haven't used it for a couple of years, we should at least bring it down somewhat. Ann Marie, you may want to just mention what that could possibly be used for if necessary.
When I, what I proposed was a position that would be someone that would assist our elderly and disabled taxpayers to fill out their forms, collect all their information. The last two years, because of COVID, the governor has done executive orders that have allowed them just to automatically renew. They didn't have to bring in any paperwork. So there was, we didn't look for anybody to do it, we didn't train anybody, but now we're back to them having to reapply. So that position is for someone who'll deal solely with that work and be an expert in that, you know, we're really looking, I put together something on the website this year that outlined all the benefits and everything that you could apply for, what the eligibility is, the age, the income requirements. So we're really trying to do a little bit of a push on that, make sure people are informed, but that we have that one person who really concentrates solely on that. So it's a, the application period runs from February 1st to October 1st, so it's not even a year round. You know, there's a little pre-work in February, a little after October 1st, but it's really just, it'll depend, the hours will really depend on how many people want to meet that, you know, want to make appointments that week. So the other problem we've had too is that we don't do any of this work in July because we're collecting, and we just can't spare that person, you know, to get out and do that. So this will enable people to, you know, also apply in those month in July. But, but the real key for me is to have the expertise in that one person so that anything that these residents are eligible for, that person will be able to really discuss all that they're eligible for, make sure they have all their paperwork together. So, so that's why it hasn't been used for two years. We haven't, we haven't been able to, they haven't had to reapply for two years.
Okay.
But they kept their benefits. So if anybody questions, they did keep everything they've had before.
Oh, okay.
The person would actually spend some time down at the senior center as well?
Yep.
So actually reaching out, people don't have to necessarily come to the municipal center, although they can.
It's, it's a little bit easier for some of our elderly residents to get in and out of the senior center, obviously. It's more, and although we do have the elevator here, it's a little bit of a walk for some of the elderly folks to park and get to that elevator entrance. So we're really trying to, we're really trying to work this around what their needs are and how we could best meet their needs, so.
Great, thank you, Ann Marie.
You're welcome.
Ann Marie, do you want to talk a little bit about personal property audits this year? What's your plans off of that?
Well, this year.
If anything?
Yeah. This year, I proposed that we do 10 more audits. We're still haven't gotten through all of the manufacturing audit, you know, companies yet, and I'm still working on that. And that goes back to when I originally proposed doing them. The state stopped auditing them when they stopped reimbursing us, so, and now the responsibility for those audits has come on us. So I'm really trying to get through those first, so it's really going to be the same thing. What I did is I just pulled anybody who received the exemption, I put them in an Excel spreadsheet, I had Excel randomly number them, and then I just took the top 10 so that there was, I had nothing to do with who was picked and when they were picked. It's just, this year we did two big ones. If I had picked them, I would have never done these two big ones in one year, so, but yeah, so we're really just going to keep following through. It's a long process, but, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's a fair process to them and it, you know, it's a lot of work for me, for the office. So to do more than that really pulls me away from some other things, so.
Okay, so that produces additional revenues once those are completed? And is that in this?
They'll be on the revenue side.
Department?
Be on the revenue side of the budget.
So Madam Chair, will we be discussing the personal property audits in a little more detail tomorrow night when we talk about revenue?
They're in the, they're in the revenue section. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the expenditure for, for those audits, the cost we pay is in this budget, yes.
In this budget?
The revenue that we generate from these audits is shown in the revenue side of the ledger.
And we can give you, I believe we've given you some information recently that showed you how much we paid for the audits and what we got in return. We could, we can update that for you.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah.
I think what I gave you was, right now, I've given you the last two years' numbers because we've just billed for this year, so I don't have all of that information coming in for this year. It takes time. By the time we start then, we go through the whole process, we do what's called an informal hearing, so we allow anybody, when we send them out their information, I should start at the beginning. The audit company goes out and does an inspection of the property, takes, gathers all of their financial information, their asset listing, their income taxes, the stuff, and puts together the audit results. I review all of that. Once I review it, go back and forth with the auditors with any questions I may have, then we send it out to the property owner. The property owner then is given a timeframe in which they can have what we call an informal hearing. So if they have any questions, if they have any additional documentation, anything that they would like to add or question about the audit, they have an opportunity to do so. Once they bring us, they sit down with us, and that usually generates a list of back and forth, like, okay, supply me with X, Y, and Z, get it to me within a couple of weeks timeframe. Then that goes back to the auditors, comes back to me, gets all reviewed, and then a final audit results goes out to them. They do have, excuse me, they do have the opportunity to then appeal anything, you know, that they're unhappy with. So we're really right in the midst of that right now. Some of them have already paid, but I don't have a final number for the ones that we're doing this fiscal year, but I do, did supply numbers for the last two years. And I did, I don't know, did I give you potential for this year? I'm sure I must have given you something for this year because you have it in the revenue.
Yep.
But it's, I mean, it's, the return is good, I have to tell you. It's a good, you know, and, and we have come across some that we've actually found out that they overpaid.
Oh.
You know, and that's definitely changed too. So, you know, it is a back and forth. So although one year maybe they owed us some money, the following year maybe we owed it back to them, you know? So it's, it's kind of hard to tell. I mean, it can really go either way. But generally, it does produce additional income.
Okay.
We budget $10,000 for the audits?
$10,000.
The audit fee, we get a good couple hundred thousand back. You know, it's a worthy, worthy adventure, if you put it that way.
Endeavor.
Endeavor, sorry. That's why I'm an accountant.
It can be an adventure. I've participated in some of the meetings. You learn a lot about the manufacturing process when you, when you have these discussions with, with the company.
All right. Okay, so, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 137 in the amount of $396,720.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's been lovely, but I'm skedaddling out of here.
Stay all night, Lothus, if you want.
I can see how exciting this is.
Thrilling.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Ann Marie.
You can watch it on TV later on this week. Next item is, next department is insurance, Department 160 on page 1, I'm looking on 113. The detail is on 112. Rob's put together a lot of, you know, a little bit of history here. Total insurance budget being recommended is $676,145, which is an increase of $52,560 or 8.43%. Although, you know, the volunteer firefighters, we did, we did budget $6,405. And that, that was primarily for the, is all that for the balloon? No.
No, the details, the details down below. The Balloon Fest policy is 3105, and the volunteer firefighter, workers' comp policy is $3,300 for a total of $6,405.
Yeah, so, you know, the question is, you know, whether the Balloon Fest is going to go on this year. We, we have a budget as if it's going to go on.
Yeah.
Although, you know, with regards to risk insurance, risk insurance, you can see where, where the increases are. Liability, auto, property, or LAP, what we call it, you'll see where we budgeted 205, but we are estimating this year $220,000 we're going to end up paying. Part of that, you want to explain that, Rob? Why it's 2025?
A year ago at this time, we had estimated a policy and the premium just came in higher than what we had estimated. So we're actually spending 220 this year versus a 205. We budgeted directly for LAP. So the increase is based on the actual we're spending this year.
So we're actually going to have a 3% increase from 220,000 to 227,000.
Correct.
We also have, we also have two new policies that we're dealing with. One is under risk insurance. One is, we purchased a cyber policy, which is something that is highly recommended, and, and, and the insurance companies really weren't doing it as part of their overall package, so you had to, you had to buy a separate package for cyber insurance. You may have read where other towns have been hacked and those kinds of things. We've, we've avoided that so far, and hopefully having this insurance will, will help us in the event that something, you know, like that occurs. We also have, the police department did acquire a drone a while ago. We had to buy insurance for that. That's $2,200, $2,200.
Where's the drone? I mean, is it for the police department?
Yes.
And, and, yeah?
Yeah.
We have to have an FAA licensed officer running the drone whenever it's being used, if you will. So we have to pay for a license. This policy covers the insurance policy as well as the FAA license to cover one or two officers. I believe they're sending two just in case there's, you know, a backup is needed, you know, for whatever, but we, this was something they did during the course of this current year.
Very helpful for search and rescue.
Yeah.
Situations, which they've used occasionally.
They've used it on the mountain for, you know, places they can't get into to see what's happened, you know, Ledger Road. I believe they used it for one of the accidents that was there as well. So it's something that they really wanted, really needed. They went out and figured we had to get it to benefit the public, so.
And insurance is in case the drone hits something or somebody or what? Can you explain that a little bit more to me?
Yeah, I mean, because there's cameras on it, I mean, you know, you know, it could be, you know, you're not going to use it to fly over somebody's house and look through the windows or anything, but at the same time, that's what insurance policies do. People could, you know, sue you for, you know, invasion of privacy kind of thing. It's all, you know, it's just a litigious society these days.
It's for airplanes, if there's any.
Airplanes, that too, yep.
Yep.
You know, that's why it has to be an FAA licensed, you know, person running the drone because obviously you need to know what, what the, you know, especially having airport here in town too. So you need to watch out for the planes and know the traffic routes and everything, I guess. It's highly, it's really complicated.
Okay.
I will talk about, say about the cyber insurance though, that this was something, like Robert said, we, we had to jump into. And, you know, as part of this process, we did it off-cycle. In other words, not July 1st. We went off-cycle. I believe the policy started either October or November 1st. Can't remember exactly at this point. And, you know, instead of, instead of going out to market for this because it has to be a separate company, our insurance carrier does not cover this coverage, the, the claims are just too large. So we had to go outside of our insurance carrier to do this. Going off-cycle was, enabled us to get into the market at a time when nobody else was getting into it. So our premium was, was relatively low at $26,000. Had we done it during, you know, July 1st renewal timeframe, it would probably be four or five times higher than that. At the same time, the insurance company had to essentially perform an audit on our IT network. And, you know, through the extremely good work of Kevin and his IT staff, we scored very, very well before we even had to do anything with regards to getting this policy. They really cited us as being ahead of the curve on a lot of our IT software, our firewalls, our, our, you know, password protections, things like that. Often we have to change them. Our website had one little minor issue, and it was minor at that, at which time Kevin and his team, through the help of the IT website company, fixed it right away, which appeased the insurance company. We got like straight A's for this policy. So it's really a credit to Kevin and his, his team that, you know, one, we were able to keep this premium lower than, than other towns. Two, that we haven't been, you know, hit, which is a good thing, obviously. And three, that the insurance industry thinks that, you know, we're a good candidate to insure because of our policies that are in place. And on top of that, the auditors or external auditors for financial purposes also had to kind of conduct the same kind of audit on our technology as now that is a step in the external audit process. That too came back with flying colors too. So, I mean, it's really, again, a credit to Kevin and his IT staff that we're able to get, get this policy in place.
Okay.
Workers' comp increased by 3%. It's on salaries.
Just based on straight salaries. It was a 0% premium increase, but obviously workers' comp is based on salaries, so. And we have a lot of overtime with the road, road bond projects and police overtime and things like that.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so this, the 3105 for the Balloon Fest, you, you would rather just leave that in there for now rather than take it out?
I'll leave that up to the council to decide. I mean, there's been some discussion about possibly doing something, you know, less intense, but if it involves, you know, fireworks, then you'd want to have it kept in here. Or you can, you know, if it does go on, you could add it in later. I mean, you know, either way, we've been, I've been trying to get some, the plan from Jim Lenoey and the Fire Department, and he was supposed to get him to me a couple of weeks ago. I haven't seen it yet. I did, you know, text him, you know, last week, and I haven't heard from him, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there. I know we're running out of, or certain amount of window in order to get this thing, even if it was possible to do it. I haven't heard any feedback from the Fire Department. I did talk to the chief. I also talked to the captain. You know, I don't, you know, the chief said it's really, it's really the company, you know, that puts it on, you know, so let the captain know. I did leave him a voicemail message several weeks ago. I haven't heard any feedback. Several weeks ago, I haven't heard any feedback. Dave, I don't know if you've heard anything as the liaison to the Fire Department?
No, it's still a no for the balloon fest.
Did they give any feedback on if the town was to do something or anything along those lines?
The town doing it?
No.
This, this dollar amount is based on a $5 million.
That's a small amount. I just leave it in there, and it's not a lot of money.
Okay.
You know, I don't, it's inconsequential. And if we decide to go ahead, then we go ahead. Do something.
If we don't have it.
A one-day thing, it's there, so.
Yeah, if we don't have it, we don't use it.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, Rob, that, that changes the number?
But that would be for, this is for, yeah, I would definitely leave it in.
Yeah, okay.
Does that change the bottom line?
Well, if they're going to leave it in, then.
No, we're just, we're going to leave it in. We're not going to touch it.
Yeah.
There's a new bottom line in.
I just had to ask the question, that's all.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, it's in, yeah, it's in there. 6405 is in there, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve Department 116, the amount of $390,150.
No, no.
No, it's the.
I'm sorry.
676.
Is it the 676 number?
Yes.
Where is it?
Total insurance.
Okay, 670, okay, 676,145. Sorry about that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a complicated department, but necessary.
Let me give you all that detail.
Lots of colors.
Yeah, I can't really put any more colors in there. It's pretty colorful, so.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Next item is solid waste management on page 200. It's Department 415. This is a recommended budget of $1,235,377, is a decrease of $38,193, or minus 3%. This is a budget that basically takes care of trash and recycling. We also, you know, we have a contract for the condos. We have a contract for the, for residential homes, and, and then we have our recycling contract for both as well. There is an increase in the tip fee for municipal solid waste, going from $68.18 to $69.54. It's a 2% increase for those of you who are following tip fees around the state of Connecticut. There are a lot of jealous municipalities that wish they were in the Covanta Bristol operation, because we have pretty much the lowest tip fee in the state, and it's, and it's, our increases are based upon CPI. We've, we joined with, you know, 14 other towns, you know, seven or eight years ago, and it, it continues to pay benefits to us in terms of, in terms of comparison to, like the Mira project, and what's happening up in Hartford. The decrease is primarily because it looks like recycling tip fees are, have settled down to the point where, you know, they're a lot lower than what we currently have budgeted, and so we're recommending, you know, a tip fee. What do we, what do you have?
Forty, we're lowering it to $45, which is an estimate based on what we're actually spending this year.
Actually, probably a little bit lower than that right now.
We are spending a little bit lower, but it has been ticking up the last few months, so we want to cover ourselves a little bit, just in case we get, don't get into a situation like we did a couple of years ago, where it went through the roof. We are currently paying, as of this point in time, through January, around $33.50.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Is this a 1.2 amount?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve Department 415 in the amount of $1,235,377.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next I have is debt service, which is on page 227, Department 710. Budget of $4,430,150. No change from the current fiscal year. We've kept that amount for quite some time. You see the principal and interest. We're, we're anticipating that we're going to have, we, we're calling it miscellaneous costs, but we, we anticipate that the principal and interest payments will come in under budget by about $1.5 billion. We're using a good portion of that to, for the, for the, pay off the deficit in the self-insurance fund, as the council is aware. And we also have debt management that's contributing to the, to the capital improvement program as well. I believe we have $400,000 from, from debt management that's going to go into the capital improvement. So, we're, it's not as if that money's not being used elsewhere to help benefit, you know, taxpayers in town as well, you know, especially taking care of that, that deficit and health insurance account.
Robert, regarding the self-insurance, is that going to be completely taken care of now with this? Are we still, is it still going to be additional?
We're going to have a little bit in the following fiscal year, but not, we're ahead of schedule, but it, you know, but part of it is because we're recommending using some of that debt management for capital improvement, so. But we have enough, you know, we're still on schedule, maybe a little bit ahead of schedule. We said we would have it, you know, the following year, I guess '24, but we won't have as much we're going to need in '24 that we had previously projected about a year ago.
Correct, yeah, that's correct, yes.
So, we're almost there.
Almost there.
We're two years through our plan, and, well, through '22, we will be two years through our planned, plan of getting rid of the deficit by fiscal year '24.
So, after this, what do we have left? What, after, once we do it, we're going to take part of this, apply it toward that, part of these savings toward that. So, what will be remaining after that? Do you have a total?
Well, I mean, as of June 21, our balance is 1.6 million. So, between '22, '23, and '24, we theoretically are, should get rid of 1.6 million and get it down to zero. We don't know what the 20, '22 and the current year are in, we're, you know, we're probably going to use, I believe the number is 600, 400,000 for CIP purposes, and, you know, we're probably going to use about 500,000 for, yeah, just under 500,000 for the debt management. So, all things being equal, our deficit as of June 22 should be about 1.1 million to cover over the next two years, '23 and '24.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please, for debt service?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 710 in the amount of $4,430,350.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, and...
Next item we have is employee benefits, which is on page 233, 232 as well. Recommended budget of $4,285,753, which is an increase of $305,762, or 7.68%. See a little bit of a decrease on the municipal retirement, but it's, you know, more than offset by the police retirement amount. Part of that is because we had, you know, some, some disability payments that needed to be made, and, and that impacted our, you know, what our, what Hooker and Hookum is estimating that we need to contribute for next year. But a good portion of that increase is, is with medical premiums. We're, we're anticipating medical premiums increase of about 8%. The reason why this is showing 11.58% is because of some of the changes in the current fiscal year. And, and also, we have some increasing, we have had people who have, some employees that previously, we have more employees that are, they used to take the waiver, and now they're coming back into the plan and not taking the waiver. So, that's their option that they can do each year, and so.
Words getting around.
Yes, that this, you know, we moved away from this, from this, you know, the HSA, you know, people went, went away from that, now they're, now they're coming back. We also have hired, you know, we have some people who have retired that maybe were single person or two-person, you know, and then we're, we're hiring people that have, you know, younger and they have families, and, you know, so that's a little bit more expensive as well. So, the mix is changing, as well as, you know, you know, so that, that's the reason why it's above 8%, the 8% medical premium increase that we're anticipating, at least at this point in time.
Yeah, we, we had talked a little bit earlier off-camera that, you know, is there any chance of this going down? And everything we're hearing from the state and/or our brokers is that no. I mean, this, this 8% that we're budgeting as an increase is a pretty solid number. And, and the state will finalize it, I believe, the first week of May, second week of May, somewhere around then, which is after our process is already completed. And like Robert said, with regards to our specific medical premium going up 11.58%, our demographics have changed a year, you know, from a year ago to a year, to today, rather, I should say. So, as of March 1st of '22, '21 versus '22, we have six additional people, employees on our insurance plan, one of which was, you know, a full-time hire. But the other five are pretty much, you know, people who, who used to get the insurance stipend opt out, have opted back onto our plan. In addition, our demographics have changed from the single-to-person family. We now have eight more people taking the family coverage than we did last year, and that premium, you know, per month is $1,400 more for a family versus a single person. You know, and it has to do with, you know, like Robert said, our retirees retiring, you know, at, you know, 65 years old, with a two-person policy, and we're hiring younger people who have kids and a family. It's just, you know, the ups and downs of, of running the insurance policy. In addition to those folks who have retired, per our insurance, per our contracts, personnel contracts, you know, they get a $3,000 a year stipend to pay towards their health insurance costs after they retire. It's the only post and timer, post-retirement benefit we offer.
Until?
Until age 65.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they retire at 65, they don't get it.
Not forever.
But we've had a lot of early retirees this past year, and we've had a lot of turnover as, as, you know, HR can tell you when they do their budget. But it, you know, I believe we have, if my number is correct, just looking at it, since a year ago, sitting here, we have had eight individuals who have retired that are eligible for this $3,000 per year.
Yeah, it's 3,000 for, for really five?
3,000 a year for five years.
Five years.
Or until you reach the age of 65, you know, whichever comes first. So, I mean, again, depending on when you retire, 62, 63, you know, you might get two, you know, and it's 20 years, actually, it's 20 years of service is the other criteria. So, a lot of our retirees have been long-tenured employees, you know, which is a good thing. So, bottom line is, there's a lot of changes in this, this one line item within this budget alone. And I really, you know, usually we sit here and say, yeah, well, we hope we have good news in a couple of weeks, and we make a final decision on this, but this year, I'm saying I don't think so, unfortunately.
I was hoping for better news, Rob.
No, I won't tell you about the dental news.
I'm sure you'll let us know.
Because I didn't budget an increase in that, but I think there will be one, so, but I didn't budget for it, so we'll let that one go. So, there's your good news.
That's nice.
And Robert, the police retirement, can you fill me in a little bit about that? What's, what is that increase due to, and why is, why is that happening?
Rob.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one if you don't mind.
Whoever wants to drop's here, so.
The, we had, what, we had one or, we had two, two disability retirements, which means the police officer retired earlier, so their, their benefit, you know, all of a sudden becomes 100% due, if you will. That's one. Two, and the biggest one perhaps, is the untimely passing of one of our officers at a very young age, whose spouse began to take the benefit right away. You know, that really, you know, had, had the individual stayed until retirement, would have been 30 years later. So, you know, that, that, all of a sudden, that benefit came due right away. So, all of a sudden, it's, it's 100% due, and, you know, we, these things are amortized over, you know, 30 years, as you know. But again, the hit is usually in the first year of these changes, and this is the year of the change.
Does that happen with Matt as well? Does that happen with the chief as well? Did he, did she?
No, he, no, he was not part of this plan.
Okay.
So, you know, the, the increases theoretically going forward, you know, will, will not be as large as it is this year, because the hit is going to take effect in '23.
Any other questions? Well, do we, first of all, let's put a motion on the table. May I have a motion, please, to approve?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 820 in the amount of $4,285,753.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or clarification? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item we have?
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome. And we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Yeah, got to keep it moving.
Ten minutes.
Yay.
Well, that's up to you. Is the town council budget.
Is that mine or yours? Yours.
Which is on page 40 and 41. Total budget of $74,309, or a 0% increase. Can't believe it.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 101 in the amount of $74,309.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a question, as I was looking at this today. What is the status of the Connecticut Main Street Center? Remember, we talked about it. I thought we had the money, then they came to present, I think, last spring at some point.
We did include it in last year's budget.
Oh, it is included, so, okay, because I noticed it wasn't listed with the other, other things here, but we, yeah, so, but it is going to continue that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $1,000 a year.
Yeah, it was $1,000, yeah. Okay, just.
Well, I'll make a note to change that. And are you talking about in the narrative?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it was in there last year.
Okay, yeah, I looked, yeah, last year.
Just didn't make it into the narrative.
It was the thousand, yeah, I know that, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Next item we have is the Conservation Commission.
Oh, do, I don't think we voted.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, and did we vote on it yet?
Trying to keep it out of schedule.
We made the motion in a second. Get them voted. Oh, you're right, you're right. Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Now, the next item is. The Conservation Commission on page 60 and 61.
Yep.
Total budget of $2,000, which is an increase of $100, and that is really for the, for the board clerk. They're, they're actually doing a few more meetings, or they anticipate that that's, they're going to need another $100 there.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 116 in the amount of $2,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next item we have is the Veterans Council, which is on page 64 and 65. Department 119. This is a budget of $11,283, an increase of $141, and that's a 1.27% increase, the, really, the increases to the part-time stipends that we give to the Veterans Committee, and they were meeting tonight. I think I saw them leave a little while ago. That's a 2.5% increase to their stipends, but there's, they also have agency subsidy, and that's for the Bristol.
Strong.
Strong.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 119 in the amount of $11,283.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Next is recycling and solid waste, or, no, excuse me, recycling committee, commission, I guess. It's a budget of $810, which is a no increase from the current fiscal year.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve Department 121 in the amount of $810.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is probate, page 72, Department 130. Recognize that we're, you know, we have a regional probate court with Farmington. And total recommended budget is $8,000. We've stated $8,000 for several years now, since we, since we joined them. We haven't heard anything from Farmington, so we're recommending $8,000. Continue.
Madam Chair? Motion to approve Department 130 in the amount of $8,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the Town Managers, line item, page 76, Department 131. Recommended a budget of $352,000, increase of $7,602 or 2.21%. Full-time salary is, is recommended increased by 2.14%. There's three employees that are, you know, make up that, which is the Town Manager, the Assistant Town Manager, and the Executive Assistant. We budgeted $160 for the Town Manager. It's a little bit less than what I'm making right now. The Assistant Town Manager, we budgeted $97,000. And the Executive Assistant budget, or salary, is at $86,000, which is a 2.5% increase over the current fiscal year. So, you know, we plugged in those numbers, you know.
So the Assistant Town Manager is not, no longer in this?
No, he is.
Yesterday?
Yes, he is. Yes, it is. So there's three numbers in there.
Oh, move to this, okay, sorry. All right.
Okay. $160, $97, and what was the other one?
86.
86, okay. All right, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 131 in the amount of $352,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next item is Human Resources, which is on page 80, Department 132. Recommended budget of $152,800, an increase of $23,895 or 18.64%. I sent out an email earlier, earlier today describing two major reasons. The increase is in the full-time salary line item. There is a decrease in the part-time salary line item. We're proposing, recommending that the part-time human resource person become full-time, to be paid $45,000 a year. And also recommended a, what I'm calling a step increase to the Human Resource Director of about a little bit over $3,300.
All right. I had read the email Robert sent out late this afternoon, so I have asked him, and I will ask the council as well, if we can set this aside till tomorrow, so I can get a chance to read through it. And I have a few questions for Robert about this, so I'd, with your indulgence, I'd like to set it aside till tomorrow, so I can get some more information. Is everybody all right with that?
Yes.
Okay. Hold that one out.
I'm fine with that as well.
Put it on our list of to-dos.
Next item I have is Elections on page 84, which is Department 133. Recommended budget of $69,184, which is an increase of $1,134 or 1.67%.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to appro, you're okay?
Yep, I'm just looking at something. Go ahead, I'll ask my question.
Motion to approve Department 133 in the amount of $69,184.
Second.
Any discussion on that? I'm just looking at the change here. Robert, with the.
Yeah, I could explain.
Part-time, can you just fill me in, because I didn't read the whole narrative?
Yeah.
Was this transferred?
What we're looking to, what Rob is looking to do, and I agree with him, is he wants to take the registrars and the assistant registrars and put them in the part-time salary line item, and then separate the election people into the, you know, part-time salary, you know, for, you know, for, or is it vice versa?
Yeah, yeah.
What he's trying to do is separate the election, the people who were there for elections from the people that we pay on a regular basis.
Oh, oh, okay.
You know what I mean? Because that's, you know, when you have it all intermingled, it's, it's hard to track.
Okay, so it would be the two registrar and assistants, but then all those that work at the poll and things, they'll be separated?
Yes.
Right. I asked Robert if I can do this. It's really for my, you know, for me, because I, it's hard for me to track the, you know, the elections, whether we have referendums or elections, state, federal, whatever. You know, I like to know what we're paying the election poll workers, and it's hard to, they get buried. So I just broke it out. That way, we have two separate lines, one for the two assistant registrars and the two registrars, and then everybody else.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Any other further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is the Town Attorney and Legal Advice on page 88. Recommending a budget of $136,255, which is a decrease of $7,907 or minus 5.48%. Looking for an increase to the Town Attorney of 2.5%. Decrease in Labor Attorney. While we have two contracts that are, that are due for July 1st, that would be in a current fiscal year. I've received proposals, and I anticipate to have an executive session with the council a week from tonight. They've made a proposal to do, not to go into a long negotiations process for both Public Works and the Town Office employees. They're making a, so they've approached us about that. I'm going to report to the council about that. If that incurs, we can do that without the Labor Attorney, and we'll be set for three years. So we don't see any contracts up for next year, so.
Police.
Well, the police, just the police, I guess.
Right, just the police, yes.
So, so we would just budget for the police, so we don't see a need to have, you know, we could see a decrease in that particular line item.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 134 in the amount of $136,255.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is the Town Clerk on page 104. The budget recommendation of $198,222. It's a decrease of $9,825 or minus 4.72%. Reason for the decrease is we did have a retirement of a longtime employee in that department, and so that resulted in replacing that with an entry-level position, which saved some dollars. The other increases are just a, you know, 2.5%. You know, normal increase for the other employees.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 150 in the amount of $198,222.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is General and Administrative Services on page 108.
I think it's 115.
The page number.
It's 115, yeah. It's 115.
109.
115.
Oh, sorry. Or at least in my book.
Yeah, it's 115.
Excuse me, now that I'm on, and I see, that's not correct.
Oh, interesting.
115.
115.
116, actually.
All right. I know, I'll make them bigger. I'll make them bigger next year, I promise. I didn't do it this year, so.
It's a process.
Well, yeah, yeah.
There's a couple bumps. Thank you for that. That's the worst thing that happens to us.
Yeah, exactly, there you go.
Recommended budget of $92,142, which is an increase of $3,250 or 3.66%. The increase is in operating supplies. We just see with, with, you know, with the fact that, you know, inflation, we're just anticipating it, so we're, you know, we're recommending an increase in that, in that particular line item, and some minor increases in some of the other ones. But office supplies and operating supplies, you know, we see potential impact for inflation, and we don't want to be caught, caught short. An overall increase of $3,250.
I will say, the advertising line, we still have to budget, at least for now. There, I know there is a bill in the legislature, I believe, again, to give some relief to municipalities with regarding advertising, but, you know, it hasn't passed ever. So, you know, at this point in time, we're still budgeting something.
Right, so we, so we have to put, you know, legal ads, you know, in a newspaper that nobody reads. Sorry about that. I read.
It's true.
But it's, but the ironic part is the state of Connecticut doesn't require that they put their decisions in the newspaper. They can do it electronically, so, but, you know, that's so much distasteful to municipal.
Yes, it is.
And is it, is there like a strong lobbying effort to?
Oh, absolutely.
Probably the newspaper. Newspaper people make money off it.
The newspapers must make some money off of all this. Absolutely, and as soon as you get up and testify that, you know, that this should go away, because we should do it online, the newspaper writes, you know, an article which mentions your name prominently, how you want to hide things from the public.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, Journal Enquirer is known for doing that over in Manchester, if you're familiar with Mr. Powell.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve this department, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 165 in the amount of $92,142.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item I have is Health and Sanitation on, I hope, page 192. Recommending a budget of $117,357, excuse me, it's an increase of $755 or 0.65%. This is the Regional Health District. And the increase is basically, is very simply that our, our population, according to the State Health Department, has increased slightly, so the per capita is staying the same, and the increase is only due to the fact that we have several more, about 103 additional residents, according to the State Health Department, which if you multiply by the per capita of $6.70, $6.70 per person, is how we get up to a $755 increase. I will point out that that $6.70 per capita is relatively low in comparison to other regional health districts. We feel pretty good about that.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 410 in the amount of $117,357.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Next item I have is Health and, Other Health and Welfare Services, which is on page Recommending a budget of $53,865, which is a no increase from the current fiscal year. And basically, that makes up three line items. Pro-Health Physicians, which is over at the Senior Center. Plainville Early Learning Center, which has historically been a subsidy that the town has made to that. And the miscellaneous other agencies, remind me of that one, Rob. $19, $198?
Yeah, we, you know, there's, I mean, it's anything. We have, sorry, I'm blanking out currently. We pay nozzles for some, you know, certain things. We'll buy lunch for, you know, interview panels, or, you know, budget meetings, or Senior Center does something. It's very minimal in dollars. You know, anything we do with the Health Committee, Health and Welfare Committee that we haven't had in a couple of years now, I think, at this point, due to COVID. But, you know, health, you know, employee health type things.
Wellness program.
Wellness, sorry, there you go. Wow, that's correct. Wellness. Yes, wellness, things we may do.
Yeah, that's a small, relatively small amount.
Yeah. To catch all line item.
I have a question. On the printout, it's got, this department is 430, but on, in the, our binder, it has 412, so.
It's 412.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 412 in the amount of $53,865.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is Social Services on page 210. Recommended budget of $31,380, which is an increase of $789 or 2.58%. The increase is in the part-time salary, 2.5%. I think it's just a rounding that breaks the 2.61, but the actual increase is.
Correct.
2.5%.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Department 430 in the amount of $31,380.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is Youth Services, page 216. It's Department 440. Recommended budget of $115,491. It's an increase of $1,482 or 1.3%. The, the decrease in the part-time salary is being covered by a state grant at 100%. And that's why that, that, that item was moved down to Other Contractual. So it went from part-time salary to Other Contractual, because it's getting paid for by a state grant. You see that shift. You see 28 on the part, minus 28, 28 and a half thousand on the part-time salary, and then you see Other Contractual going up by 28,000. That's really the reason for that. But that's, but that's being covered by a state grant at 100%.
Right, the total of those two line items are covered by the state grant, which you see in the revenue side of the, of the budget.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Motion to approve Department 440 in the amount of $115,491.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.